Thank you. Call.
Mr. Benton?
Here.
Mrs. Brewer?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Swager?
Here.
Mrs. Thomas?
Here.
Stand for the pledge.
The United States of America is the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with every day his justice for all.
Sure.
Okay. I'll read the meeting notice. This is a public meeting of the Board of Education for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes. Upon request of the superintendent, the district shall make reasonable accommodation for a person with a disability to be able to participate in this activity, and we also keep a recording of all of these board meetings. With that being said, I do believe we have a motion to go into executive session for personnel to begin the meeting. Did I? Ann, did you send?
Yes.
Ann's motion, I need to second.
I'll second it.
We can call the roll.
Mr. Benton?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Swager?
Yes.
Mrs. Brewer?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
It's 5:03. This should be a fairly brief one, and we'll be back.
I think mine went to sleep. It didn't work.
Debbie, can you help with passwords?
That's not it.
Debbie, are we good, Deb? Okay, we're back in session 537, did you have? 538, what did we have? 538. Okay, and back to our agenda then. Dr. Wagner, present the agenda.
Mr. Swager, I have some verbal changes I'd like to make to the agenda for tonight. I had talked to Mr. Brickner earlier today. Under the consent agenda, which starts on, or at number six. If you go, you look at there's B resignations, I'm going to keep that. But I want to remove C supplemental, D pupil activity, and E volunteers. So I'll just take those off for right now. Again, I talked to Mr. Brickner earlier today about this. There's just some pre-employment processes that we want to look at first before I bring them to the board. So other than that, I don't have any changes to the agenda.
Okay. We can, with that, you have those notes to change the agenda on those. If we can get a motion to adopt the agenda then with those changes?
I'll motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Benton?
Yes.
Mrs. Brewer?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Swager?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Do we have any public remarks? Anyone sign in? No, no public remarks. Thanks, Mike. And then we'll move on to under presentation. I think we're on to, is that the levy?
Yep, so we have four presentations. The first one, Mrs. Pulli will lead, but we want to talk again to the board about levies. You're gonna go through, you updated your PowerPoint from what we looked at last time.
Yes, a little bit.
Okay.
Again, most of this information is repetitive, but we just want to keep it in the forefront of the board and of the public that we do have two levies that are expiring. The first being the income tax levy, which is the 1% on all residents of the Johnstown local schools. It does expire December 31st, 2023. And during last school year, it generated just shy of $5 million for us. And our emergency levy, which again, emergency is a poor word, but it is the legal word. Our fixed sum levy expires December 31st, 2024. And it generates $2.29 every year for us. The mileage rate varies for each household depending on the total valuation of the district. And again, combined these levies provide approximately 30% of our current operating expenses. And operating expenses are items such as teacher salaries, related benefits, our transportation, busing, extracurriculars, supplemental contracts. Basically, all the programming that we have in place right now is funded primarily by general fund dollars, which primarily by these levies. The cumulative effect of these levies in the five-year forecast, which goes through the 26, 27 year, is just over $22 million. So obviously, that's a huge part of our operating budget. Both levies are eligible to be on the May 2023 ballot. So in the January meeting, the first meeting in January, there'll be two resolutions of necessity to, that's a procedural thing. One, we have to submit to the state income tax commissioner. The other has to go to the county auditor. And they will verify how much money we'll receive based off of those. Then at the second, in January, the board can vote to place those levies on the May ballot. And that has to be completed by February 1st. And again, quickly, Intel will have an impact in the future. Impact will not be until the plant opens, which is still expected to be sometime in 2025. So while we will get some money from that, we will not get money until it opens. So these levies are going to be very important, providing that operating money. The board has committed that that Intel funding is going to be used to pay for growth. New buildings in the future, capital improvements, those types of things. Not the operating dollars that we have right now are not going to be paying for those things. The current residents should not be, the board believes, should not be funding that growth primarily. So these levies, again, operating expenses to keep the level of programming that we have now.
I think we need to reassure the voters that that's not an additional tax.
Correct.
That is a renewal.
Exactly.
And it does not influence what we're currently taxing our residents. So we will not be adding to that. We're just trying to stay at the level we are now funding our programs.
Both are renewals. There is no new money being asked for at this time. Thanks.
In our compensation agreement with Intel, when they open in 2025 proposed, do we then start collecting that in 2026?
No, because it's based on the income tax withholdings.
Okay.
We'll start collecting it once they start paying.
So it starts, as soon as they start employee, we start to collect a portion and then as they ramp up. And if they ramp up bigger and bigger, I just want to make sure, because property a year behind, but because of the compensation agreement, we can actually start realizing those as employees grow. Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any questions or comments on this? I know we've been talking about this.
I know there was that third additional that you had said is something we might want to consider. Is it too late? Was there something about the timing of that?
You're talking about this, making the replacement. Instead of, instead of an emergency.
Is that what it was?
Yeah.
It was just semantics.
Okay.
For us to do that would really.
We could then not legally say it's a renewal. It'd be a new one. So we're, we're just, you know, planning on, because we're not asking for additional dollars. We want to stick with the two we have and go with two renewals of our current levies. Yes. For those that didn't hear, that is, we're not asking for any additional monies. It's just a renewal of our existing two levies.
And then also, so the board's where, you know, there's no action tonight that's needed by the board. But most likely, it's a January meeting, because we'll run, there's two resolutions that we'll need to get organized into you. So between then and now, we'll be giving you more information. Most likely, at least one of those resolutions, well, I know at least one will be needed by January 9th. And then we'll have to have a second one, maybe a special meeting, so that we can meet our timelines for the May election. Then we have to back up from there, but we'll get that to you, okay?
Thank you.
If there's no other questions, then we'll talk about the next item, which is lacrosse. Tonight in the board agenda, there is a resolution to, that asks the board to recognize lacrosse as a varsity sport. So I'm hopeful that the night, as a reminder, we have about 20 to 25 students who are expected for the upcoming season. We've been working through ownership of the equipment. We've had some support there from different people, including some of the staff as well are helping. And athletic boosters have some monies already earmarked for the lacrosse program. And then if the board does approve this tonight, then I expect to post the supplemental position next month. The process on that, just so you know, is I, because supplemental positions are included within the teacher's contract, we have to get a, we have to make sure the union agrees to add. Typically, it's not a problem to add a supplemental, but we have to go through the formality, so I don't have it here for tonight. But I know you've seen some information around this. And then the last thing is around field usage. I want to make sure that we have a clear understanding about what fields are used and when. I think there's still some questions about the north property and how we're using that, questions about the turf. I also appreciate then, in the conversations with the board, that you've been looking further and not just a nine, 12 lacrosse program, but also thinking about a middle school program eventually. So we're going to put that into the process. So there's some people I'd like to see get together and really start looking at field usage now and into the future. And the future we're using and not overusing some areas and utilizing others. So more to come on that. I'm happy to answer any questions about lacrosse, if you have any. I know you've seen quite a bit of information.
Are you including grounds and maintenance committee members on that, just study the field use, land use?
Yeah, we definitely can. In fact, we have to get a meeting scheduled here sometime soon. Anyway, I was talking to Mr. Jenny, so probably in January we'll get one scheduled. We were gonna, I was gonna ask a few people like Mr. Brickner and Mr. Jenny and Bozenberg and some others to help start that process, but we'll bring it to Buildings and Grounds. Anything else I can answer for you about lacrosse?
Oh, we were supposed to get a report from Mr. Brickner about how many teams they could potentially play and in tournaments, or how many teams there are in the area. We were supposed to see some statistical data, and I've not received that yet. Has anybody else received that? Like, will we be traveling a long distance to get competition in tournaments? What do we look like? That was part of the plan.
If you get that, Robbie, if you get that to me, I'll get it in the weekly report to the board so we can have that. I think you've, you had an earlier report for the summer, I think I saw, that had some of that detail. But I don't have it off the top of my head unless you do.
I anticipate, Robbie, that you currently schedule lacrosse, or have this past year at least. Would that schedule remain close to the same? I mean, is that the intention, that we're not going to be adding new schools far, far away just because we're making it a varsity sport?
We would be playing the same schools we've been playing.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
That's clarification, and I didn't, I had not heard how that was going to look. So we didn't know if we were expanding that. We had more transportation costs to think about.
Let's review that before Friday, and I'll get, I'll get an update to the board like I typically do. And then we'll be able to get that direct information to you.
Thank you.
Anything else we can answer for you about lacrosse that comes up in a resolution later tonight? Good? Okay, next, we'll talk about health insurance. I know at the last board meeting, the board approved the health insurance rates. And we have another resolution in front of you tonight. Nothing magical about that. Typically, we don't bring two resolutions to the board around health insurance. But we continue to work on this. You know, it's a complicated issue. So Mrs. Pulli and I have been working with our insurance consultants. And we're able to repackage some of the way it's structured. And there's actually a slight reduction now in both the single and family rate. So we want to bring it back to the board. So we're asking you to approve that. You'll see that later on tonight, too. Any questions about that? I'm sorry, only in the HSA, yeah, the HSA is where the, sorry, I should be clear about that. The HSA is where you see the reductions, not in the PPO plan. Thank you, Mrs. Pulli. Anything else with? Okay. Thing I wanted to talk about, and I know it's hard to believe, but January is going to be here before we know it. And we had talked at some time in some of our strategic work about board committees and what exists and may possibly what should exist for the future. Currently, for board committees, we have buildings and grounds. We have curriculum. We have facility construction. We have insurance. We have policy, safety, and technology. We've talked about keeping buildings and grounds the same. I'd like to propose to the board that we form a new committee under communications. I think with what we've had that as a strategic focus this year, I think, and into the future. I think under the communications, we would also put some subtopics under there like branding, messaging. You know, there's some of the work that we're doing, so that would be an addition. Curriculum would stay the same. Facilities construction, I don't think we need that right now, so I think we could put that off to the side. Finance, I'd like, I think it would be good for us to have a true finance committee. And then policy, safety, and technology would still remain the same. I did have a conversation with one of the board members, and there was a question about insurance. And should we still keep, even though we have a finance meeting and a, or it's committee, I know there's a lot of work to there's a lot of work to do there, especially with, um, you know, looking at what's going to happen with levies and implications there in the forecast. But then the question is, should we even keep a separate health insurance committee, um, still on behalf of the board and not collapse it inside of, um, finance? So I wanted to talk to the board a little bit about that tonight and get your thoughts. If that's the direction you want to go where you keep a separate finance from insurance, I'm fine with that. Um, if you don't, I'm still okay with that because we're going to form, you've heard this discussed already, we're going to form an insurance committee and I'd like to see eight to 10 staff, a cross section of staff. We could bring the board members into that. So I'll be quiet.
I think, um, definitely we need to include, I think we definitely need to include the staff members bringing those in as we've talked about. Um, and then to have the board, at least one board member, two board members, but then have that person, one of them be able to be on the finance committee so they can take those concerns and put them into the finance committee. But I think combining it all into one meeting for finance, then you wouldn't be getting the, um, the collaboration that we're looking for with the staff and, and, and things because the finance meeting, I think would be a long meeting. Insurance is a long meeting. I mean, they're usually two hours at least.
Sure.
Not to say anything about it, but I mean, they're, they're lengthy. I wouldn't want to shorten them.
No.
Because I think there's a lot of concern and I know we're going to be looking at a lot of things this year. So that's just, I possibly, you know, we're going to get to that point where we can combine the two, but I'm not sure that next year's the thing because we do want to make some changes.
Yeah, I agree with what Ann is saying. You know, there's too much activity, too much work to be done in each of those areas, right? And both of those areas are critical to the success of our school system going forward. So I think if you combine them, you have the potential to shortchange each of those activities. So I agree wholeheartedly with what Ann is saying. I think we should have it separated.
I mean, I think we can get to that point, you know, that we can combine them.
Yeah.
It is a major contract. The health insurance is a lot of money for the district and it does deserve its moment in the sun where we can concentrate. However, I can see a benefit to including that same information in the finance committee, some way to integrate it. I don't know how that is, but I see your point. I see where you're heading. Right now, I think we've got a lot of, like, so maybe we keep them separate until we can combine them. And maybe finance merges over, make sure our people on finance are still related to health insurance. So you do know that you have that bridge.
I was going to say maybe someone from the health insurance committee will for sure be on our finance committee.
That might be true.
So at least there's that continuity.
Yeah. Well, I, you know, as has been said, I mean, these are two big, you know, two big drivers for us right now. As you talk about levies, forecast, we know insurance that, you know, again, we're going to have a, a wider district committee on that, but these are two very important, you know, components. Everything's important, but these two really impact the financial aspects of the school district.
And we have the HSA that we're implementing.
That's true. We're going to be looking at that.
So it's another additional complexity to what we're doing this year. I think that's a challenge to educate and to get everyone on board to try to control those costs.
So if everyone's in agreement, then what I'll do is I will keep a separate insurance committee meeting. So I'll just read through these again. So buildings and grounds will be, stay the same. Communications would be a new one. Everyone like that idea?
Yeah.
Okay. I just think that's another area that's not financial, but it's a critical one for the school district. Uh, curriculum will stay the same in terms of its organization. Um, eliminate facilities, construction.
I'm okay with that, except we still don't want to forget the opportunity that we must look at closely as the school board offers. So at some point, we need to keep that on our radar. I don't think it needs to be a separate committee, but I think it needs to be on our radar.
Thank you. And we talked about finance. So we'll have finance and we'll have insurance separate, but I do think there's a, obviously a marriage between those two. So we'll look at that. Policy will stay the same, safety and then technology. So in essence, we'll net with one additional committee when we're done this year, but I think, or this in 23, but I think it makes more sense operationally. So I'll get that out.
Sounds good.
Okay. And we'll get that ready in the January 9th board meeting then.
You know, I'd like to take out the word alternate in there, too. That's something that someone added along the way. As you have, uh, curriculum is Amanda and Ann. And if either one of them can't come or can't attend a specific meeting, we talked initially when we set up committees, you can call and get a substitute from a board, from the board. Who else could come that day? But I'm not sure that word alternate is the right approach because they're equal members to me.
Yeah, I agree.
And the inspiration for an idea for curriculum comes from both of you.
Well, the idea with those committees too is that you would have two board members, not three, because then you have a quorum. So I'm actually looking at that policy right now because I have to see if we have to change the policy, um, on where the committee structure is, but I'm working on all that right now anyways.
Perfect.
But I do agree. I think you should have two. And typically, and I have to admit, because I have to, there's so many policies that we have to update. Typically, your board president is your immediate alternate and they can assign from there. But I'll look at that policy and I'll have it ready for the board.
I think that's what we had determined early on when we set up committees.
Yeah.
That's how it looked close.
Yeah. Well, again, I think with all of our strategic work, we need to have two board members in many of these committees. And then if we can't, somebody's absent, we'll look at alternates. I'll work on that, too. Is there anything else with board committees? If there's nothing else, then that's all I have for president. That's all we have for
On to the approval, the consent agenda.
Um, I think you want to have discussions first on, right, on board committees because we didn't do any reporting out. I think, I think the only one we need is policy was, um, the only meeting that's been held since our last, um, board meeting is policy met on, um, the 15th of December. And then curriculum will be meeting on, um, January 4th. So nothing there, but do we have a policy?
No, we, we did, we did report out because the
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
And the 15th is this week.
Sorry. That would help. Sorry. What day is it?
Uh, Friday.
I wouldn't believe that.
Today's Monday. Don't confuse.
Can we cut the live feed, please?
Put a delete in there.
Sorry. Thursday, one. Yes, that's, that's what it is. I hope we can dub this meeting.
Yeah, it's Thursday. I, I was.
Do you want to go through the, uh, recommendations on the consent agenda?
Yeah, sorry. We'll get serious again. So on consent agenda, the only thing that , um, really exists in consent is, um, for resignations. I see D and E, the board has removed. And then the, um, treasurer's report is still active on there and also the board meeting minutes. I believe that's, oh, and permanent appropriations, certified estimated resources. That's everything, right? Okay.
Can I get a motion on? It'd be, uh, B, F, G and H.
Oh, I'll second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Benton?
Yes.
Mrs. Booer?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Swager?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Onto the treasurer recommendations.
We are, um, we moved most of the treasurer's items into the consent agenda, but we did decide to leave the donation separate so that we can, uh, publicly recognize those donations. Um, so we have three this month. We received a, uh, back to school sponsorship from Intel, um, for $6,500. The Johnstown Choir Boosters donated sound equipment for concerts and musicals, estimated to be worth about $1,500. And, uh, Progressive Communications Corporation, Mount Vernon News made a monetary donation to the athletic department for
Can I get a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion? Obviously. Thanks. Yeah. Thank you very much to those generous donations. Back to school stuff, I think we certainly, uh, staff enjoyed that and appreciated that. And then, uh, for the sound equipment for the musicals, we all enjoy the musicals, uh, with Ann. Uh, I'm sure we'll enjoy that.
We will. Thank you.
And then the, uh, monetary donation for, uh, that's greatly appreciated. So any questions or comments on these?
Were they able to use the new sound equipment for yesterday's choir?
As far as I know, they did, yes.
That's good.
Great.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Benton?
Yes.
Mrs. Booer?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Swager?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
I tried to time that, Alan, when you were drinking.
I figured you were trying to embarrass me. You did a good job. I'll give you a thumbs
All right. Dr. Wagner, back to you.
Okay. So recommendations, the first one is for lacrosse and the resolution is for the Board of Education to approve lacrosse as a sanctioned varsity sport.
Can we get him?
Go ahead.
Do you want to get a motion on that? Are we doing A and B together or how are we doing these? We're doing each of these individual? Yeah. Okay. Uh, if I can get a motion?
I'll motion.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Discussion? Welcome aboard, I guess, would be after we vote.
Somebody want to say it's about time? I, I'm hopeful that we.
No. You're just appreciative. It's not about time, right?
Well, I
I know that the sport has grown.
Yeah.
And, uh, there's been a lot of interest with the students, the student athletes and, um, we even have, uh, lady, uh, the ladies participating on the coed team. So it's definitely growing in participation and I'm glad to see it on here tonight.
Yeah, I'm excited. We're one of the, I mean, really, we're one of the few schools that will have a varsity lacrosse team. I mean, it's not, uh, uh, that, that, yes, our size of school. So it's exciting there. Uh, this is obviously contingent on a few things happening, making sure we get the equipment, making sure we, you know, everything gets lined up. We get a coach, all of those fun things, workout space, but, uh,
Numbered for a lot of things.
Yeah, Robbie, the one thing I did, I think I failed to ask is, are we, we need to set participation goals for this as we did the other sports. You know, if they don't meet them each year, how many people those are?
Can you speak at the mic so that we can get a record?
So the question was regarding participation numbers? Yeah, you know, we've talked on the other sports saying you have to have so many students consistently within a program to, to remain varsity sports. Uh, we'd need to do the same with lacrosse that we have done with the others. So basically, you know, we, we need to build this from the lower levels up and continue it because we're, you know, time and space is valuable here and we've got to have participation in, in our, uh, sports if we're going to continue to offer them. So I'd like to, you know, same as with lacrosse, determining what's the reasonable number of participants to field a lacrosse team successfully.
Sure. Yeah. Um, I think I might've included some about program numbers in a prior report.
You did. I just, when we hire a coach and interview, making sure that information is shared and everyone knows what those numbers are. And then, you know, the kids coming up, making sure they understand because we've got to keep people involved in the sport, just like the other ones, uh, to, to continue to, uh, compete on it.
Yeah. So on the field at any given time, there's 10, 10 athletes. So, uh, that's obviously the minimum, but, um, want to go into a season with multiple alternates and substitutes should there be injuries or, um, other issues. So, um, really, uh, to going into the season, you should have at least 15 on a roster, um, preferably more than that. And like was stated earlier, we're probably expecting 20 to 25, uh, for the season, which is definitely solid, uh, for a varsity program and, um, wouldn't be looking at a second high school level until you were, uh, definitely in that 30 to 35, uh, range. But, uh, as noted earlier, I do appreciate some of the future planning and long-term view going towards, uh, this program and the discussion's not just about, uh, this team this year, but also years down the road, um, what does that look like and, you know, how to inspire growth, uh, you know, starting from the middle school level.
Robbie, will you give me a, a little synopsis on some of these higher points and I'll put it in the report for the board this week. And, uh, it'd be good for us to remind, you know, like we talked about some of the other questions, too. And I'll get a good summary to the board.
Sure.
And I know you've got a ton of information, but if we can condense it, probably a page or less will be good.
Sometimes that's tough for me.
I tell Robbie a page or less and the margins are like Derek and our laughter. Like, is this, is this three quarters of it?
You can tell the exuberance you have for being the athletic director.
Yeah. Yeah. And, and just one note, because we had mentioned transportation earlier is just, um, given that each, each game, they're only taking one bus. Um, and usually playing about 18 games in a season, uh, maybe a couple scrimmages. Uh, in recent years, that transportation cost has been $3,000 or less. Um, so while there might be one or two that are a little bit further out, the majority of the games are still played within probably about a 45 minute radius. Um, and yeah, we might have one or two longer trips, but that's not something that would necessarily change going forward. Um, so that, just something I was thinking about that was mentioned earlier, but I'll absolutely, uh, give a brief synopsis, uh, about a few of those points for this week.
Excellent. Thank you. And then I assume for the athletic boosters, uh, you're here, Mike, so you'll hear making them a varsity sport, whatever changes that occurs in your organization as part of that. Robbie will represent, uh, the, at those meetings for us. So I think we should be all in line, right? You guys are aware of this coming. It's not news to you. So, uh, I think we should be in good shape.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
I'm excited. Thanks.
Call the roll.
Mr. Benton?
Yes.
Mrs. Booer?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Swager?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Swager?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Motion carries. Welcome aboard. Onto health insurance.
Health insurance. Um, so there's a resolution for the board to approve health insurance rates and HSA employer contributions as presented. And as a reminder, this is, uh, you know, an update from what the board approved last time, last board meeting.
Can I get a motion?
I'll motion.
Can we get a second?
A second.
Discussion? I think we're all fully aware of the need here and motion. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Benton?
Yes.
Mrs. Booer?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Swager?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
I can see.
Um, next is to set the time and place for the organizational meeting. So, um, the 2023 organizational meeting as proposed is on January 9th at 5:00 PM in the middle school media center here. And then our first regular board meeting will follow immediately after the organizational meeting.
Just note on the agenda, it says December 12th. We'll have to revise the agenda on that. At least on my agenda.
It's right on, on line.
The online one, the paper one doesn't? Okay.
The recommended action has the ninth.
Yeah.
And it's at five. We're not doing earlier.
Oh, yeah. Are we going to do earlier?
We normally do four thirty, a half hour prior, right?
Yeah.
For the
Do we want to do that? We can start at five.
I think we just start at five because asking people to get off of work and be able to tune in or get here before that is a little, I mean, what are your thoughts, board members? We'll just do five, stay at five.
It shouldn't take more than a half an hour.
It's usually
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. We get a motion?
I'll motion. I'll second.
Call the roll.
Mr. Benton?
Yes.
Mrs. Booer?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Swager?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Next resolution is the, and it's a, a president pro temp for the 2023 organizational meeting. And it's been the history where the current board president would also serve as a pro tempore for the organizational meeting. So in this recommendation is to appoint, uh, Tim Swager as the president pro temp for the January 9th, 2023 organizational meeting.
Can we get a motion?
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Benton?
Yes.
Mrs. Booer?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Swager?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
I did. It's just pro temp. All right. Onto board comments. Any, any updates we need from anyone? I think we're
Do you want to make a date on the milestone statement?
Yeah, I'll do that next.
He'll do that. Yes, superintendent?
The art show, um, was well attended. I did not attend, but I know Alan and, and Dr. Wagner did. Amanda did. Excuse me, Mrs. Davis did.
to see the effort that was put in by our staff to do that. You know, you had everyone's name underneath every artwork. It was all posted, all professionally done. Really looked nice. Really had a good presentation.
I agree. I think the community was so excited and, and teachers and administrators were excited to have the community back in the building. And I'll have to say that the artwork with the art teacher this year was top-notch. So, very happy that we have that this year for our students.
That's great.
I'd like to see it moved to the high school, too. Don't want to put you in pressure.
I think they had a lot of people waiting outside to get in, so.
Oh, unbelievable number of people.
They might need to move it to the high school.
Yeah, they said, I think around 1,500 people showed up. Amazing how crowded it was. There was a line that came out way past the entrance of the building for people waiting to get in.
It moved quickly, don't worry.
Excellent, thank you. Also, I think Mayor Bernard will be Wednesday, Wednesday morning at the elementary reading down there as well with him. And I think, what else we have coming up?
We've got Mary Muffins.
Mary Muffins.
The holiday donuts at JIS.
Yeah, JIS. So, we've had a lot of activity going on at the schools and continuing and got a lot of good feedback on that. And Craig, I do think getting those photos, getting everything out really, you know, demonstrating a lot of the stuff done. People, I do appreciate that.
Heard Brutus Buckeye made an appearance, too, at the middle school.
And it looked exciting.
Very exciting. I was excited to see.
Just don't repeat that before the playoff game because we didn't win that week, so. I'm not superstitious. I don't take chances. I don't tempt fate. All right.
And I think we have the Big Red Band going on their Disney trip.
Big Red Band has their Disney trip coming up. They leave Saturday at 1:00, did you say?
Yep.
All right.
And they're playing on Wednesday. I don't know what the date is.
Playing Wednesday at 2:35 at the Magic Kingdom. Tuesday at Cocoa Beach in the Ron John Surf Shop. All right. I do know we got a lot of people going to that, so I hope they all enjoy it and have a safe trip.
Hope they have a safe trip.
Oh.
Johnstown travels well.
That's right.
You know, if people keep going, I'm never going to get to my report because I, you know, I mean, like, it's destroyed. There's nothing I'm going to be able to report. I'm going to say pass when it comes to me, but.
That's right.
Sorry, keep going.
It just, a lot of these things, like Janet shared, that the high school choir sang at the schools and it was fantastic. It just, there's a lot of great things going on with the students here and the staff here at a lot of different buildings and, and a lot of different students participating in different activities, which is great to see. So, we do appreciate that. And with that, Phil, we'll turn it over to what comments you have left.
Barely anything, but I'll, I'll see what I can cobble together here, but I'll see what I can do. In all seriousness, I did want to talk about the General Miles Estate because a lot of work done with that. We've had a strong partnership with the city, the Johnstown, Greater Parks and Rec District. We've been working closely with the Lickin Parks Board. We had a very good meeting on Tuesday last week. We have some more events coming up. I also want to thank Mrs. Brewer because she's been a tremendous teammate through this. I mean, she's done an awful lot of getting a lot of the research ready and other aspects that, so I think we're a good team in representing the school district. So, you know, hopefully we'll have more updates here for you soon. The next big thing that'll happen is the status hearing on January 3rd with the judge down in Newark, but we have some work to do till then and now, so. Want to, so I'm glad that the board's approved that. We already talked about organizational meetings, so we're good there. How the events, I do also want to compliment on the art show, the PTO, because they just did a tremendous job organizing that. You know, Craig was walking outside the building at one point and it was, they were efficient, but the, the line was wrapped all the way to near the end of the building. So, I was watching. It was almost an hour before everyone came in. And not everyone came to it right at the same time, but there was about 1,500 people and I'm waiting for a final count from the PTO. I also want to thank my Gianini because, you know, it's a lot of times it's the people who are doing the work behind the scenes. And he was actually helping with Santa. And if you ever dealt with any kids, young kids with Santa, it's scary sometimes. And he did a tremendous job just, you know, grabbing some of the kids and helping them, trying to navigate that. He actually had a magic antler. He was letting them hold. I watched one of them. It was great. And they held it and it kind of allayed their fears and they got to see Santa. We heard it wasn't 100%, but did a nice job anyways. So, thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks, Mike.
Did a tremendous job. We captured some of that in the video. We talked about choir concerts. They're ready, so well done there. I was actually able to get to JES today twice. And one was to see the choir concert. And boy, I'll tell you, for a group of K through three students, they did a tremendous job watching their high school counterparts present. But we talked about the mayor's visit on Wednesday, so that's good. Mr. Swager will be there. Mary Muffins, we had our first one today for loved ones. We had our first one today. The, and that was third grade and first grade. Third grade is our larger class, you know, like standing room only, tremendous, well done there. And then, that occurs again on Thursday. And then, we have the, at JIS, we have the holiday donuts. So, we have that on tomorrow and Wednesday. And I think that's all I have that you guys didn't steal from me, right? I think that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? Like, everyone knows I've been, each meeting, saying about picking up litter, cleaning up. And in honor of Bob Barker's 99th birthday, help control the pet population, have your pet bait or neutered. So, thank you very much. If we can get a motion to adjourn.
On that, yeah. On that, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
I don't have the nerve.
Second.
It's time to go, Tim.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Benton?
Yes.
Mrs. Brewer?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Swager?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.